I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Human Services Committee. If we would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the clerk take the roll, please?
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin. Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Thank you. Based on feedback of our last meeting, we do have hearing devices for anyone in the audience that needs it to be louder. We do have those available, so just let us know if you need something. Item two, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion that we accept the agenda as proposed.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard this evening? Seeing none, any updates? From anyone? Hearing none, any conceptual initiatives?
None tonight.
And no old business, moving on to number seven, A, contract approval request for Blue Waters Safe Horizons 2022 Contract Addendum Number One.
I'd move this be sent to the full board.
Support.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion?
Should be any discussion.
Yeah. Uh, motion, motion carries, thank you. Item B, fiscal year 2023 County Veteran Service Fund Grant Application.
Make a motion, send that to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any human service matters, other service matters to be brought up this evening?
You've got a resolution. Seven C. C.
Oh, thanks. Uh, item C, Resolution 22-17, approving the Area Agency on Aging 1B, fiscal year 2023 through 2025, a multi-year plan.
I'd move that sent to the full board.
Support.
Thanks. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, are there any other services to, matters to bring up? Hearing none, information only, we did receive, um, the Health Department made points of interest.
Make a motion, receive and file.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item ten.
Make a motion to receive and file packets.
Thank you.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourned.
I would call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee to order roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin. Commissioner Beeden.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Uh, thank you. Seeing no additions to the agenda, could I get a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard under the Judiciary and Public Safety? Seeing none. We have no old business tonight. Um, are there any conceptual initiatives?
None tonight.
Thank you. Um, under new business, seven, A, Sheriff's Office Fiscal Year 2022 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Application. Bulletproof vests are $525 apiece. We're requesting ten, and this has a 50% match, so it's a $5250 request. Um, we seem to get that every year, um, and then they get distributed to, uh, out of there's a shelf life on the vest.
Five years.
So as they come due, they give them where they need to be, so we need a motion to send that to full board.
I'll make a motion to send that to full board.
Support.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item seven, B is for final action. This is the 2022 Homeland Security Grant Program Operation Stone Garden Grant Application. This is a grant application in the amount of $292,580. Over the past five years, we've received between $93,000 and $278,000 per year. Um, you never know where it's going to come back at, but we send in priorities and, um, find out at a later time what we can have to spend in that operation. But this is just for the application, so if we could get, um, do we need roll call for that because it's final? It's not monetary yet.
No.
I'd make the motion for final action.
Support.
We have motion in support for final. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item seven, C, the agreement between the Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, and the Public Guardian. Um, this is a change of $61,586. It was a three-year contract, it's being extended through the year 23, um, and it also includes 12 more patients for the year 22 and 12 more for the year 23. And this is just being sent to the full board for final.
I'll make a motion to send it to the full board.
Support.
Anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, item seventy, the contract approval request, it's from Connect Health Core XRM. It's a software program that's going to alleviate the manual inputs at the jail when we're trying to get reimbursed, whether it be from the state or the Fed or health insurance carriers. It keeps track of our inmates and our costs and it automatically, and it's part of our jail, jail software program. This is just a, another piece that we haven't had in the past. It is a $31,750 cost and it's got a $4,762 a year annual maintenance to keep it updated. So we need to send that to the full board.
Make motion, make motion and send the full board.
Support.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other judiciary and public safety matters? Um, I, I have one. Um, we had our central dispatch meeting yesterday and we talked about, um, the State Police Tower in Birchville, and there's been some, been some issues and we get up on that end of the county and we run out of, out of service, and there's some areas of dead zones which, um, when we go to our state park up there, we get to the end of the county, and there's just, um, the fire departments are, are needing it, are requesting some information. It's an $800,000, not a new tower, a new head on the tower, um, new, whatever they're putting on it. So it's in the works, we're looking at doing different things. It's going to be put in our CIP program at the county for future projects, and I know there's some grant dollars that we're hoping that we can send in because this will, does service the DNR, it does service the state police, it does service our sheriff's department, the local, any local police, um, and fire departments. So there's a lot of activity that can be used and, um, that is just something that has been a problem, I guess, for, for some time and just being brought to the attention. So I think it got kind of spearheaded when the individual ARC funds were going through the townships and Georgia had some money and talked to different people, and, um, I, I think it was kind of a shocker when we found out that, you know, this wasn't going to be a $75,000, $100,000 antenna fix that they could do that I thought $800,000 would put the tower up, but, um, this is just to go up and change some hardware that's there. So, does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, we, I had a meeting with the Downriver Fire Chiefs and Police Chiefs and we discussed issues with the new encryption program that's ready to go online at the county level right now, and one of the bills for one of the fire chiefs was $300,000 just to replace radios because some of the existing, because the radio manufacturers won't encrypt anything older than five years old, which takes majority of the radios out that are in service, are still up, working fine, but can't be encrypted. So, um, I just, I think we're all going to hear a lot more complaints from this. I mean, uh, I'm still digging into it, why exactly we have to do it for our first responders. I could see maybe having a police channel that's encrypted because of information there, but as, on the fire side, I, yeah, they're going to hear what we're doing anyway because they beat us to the call sometimes. Uh, I just, I don't, I don't, I need to get more information, but I sat in front of these gentlemen and there was close to a million, million and a half in radio ass out of me, yeah, we didn't get that kind of money, but, um, just wanted, you're probably all hear more information on that down the road, so. And, uh, the sheriff's department's going to be two to three years out on changing all theirs out also, at the minute, so.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not 100% certain and we'd have to get with, with Tina and find out what's, when they go to sending encrypted messages, is that the only thing that can be sent or, or is it just, will it still come over the radio as a non-encrypted?
Mm-hmm.
And so you could use the life of your radio and then when you replace them, you can buy the ones that.
And that, I, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
But to throw out all this equipment just because.
Right.
And, um, and I don't know if some of this is state mandated because we use a state radio system, the 800 system is a state radio system. So where, the towers we talk about as our towers are actually, as you just talked about in Birchville, our state towers that we use the state 800 system.
Right.
And everything has to be passed through the state to be a contractor or, and that's sometimes why our costs are expen, more expensive to do anything.
Well, we'll get, I'll get some more information on that too, because like I said, I, I'm going to be talking to Tina tomorrow, um, about a couple other items, so, um, I will, we'll get some information out.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, does anybody have anything else? Motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You came all the way to me.
Good evening, I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee to order, I have a roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
My time that I had another piece coming. Because we had to do that upon, you know, for engineering and stability reasons, the trash filling goes on in the meantime. So we had about a year and a half lag until we were able to open up the new section that we constructed last year. And all this time, the garbage is filling inside and a large, long trash slope was being created against this small 15-foot or 50-foot-long garbage slope or liner slope, I should say, of 8C. So this created this valley that needed to be filled. And because of the length of that long outboard trash slope, it takes a lot more effort to get the garbage from the top of the slope to the bottom of the slope using their trash compactors and expending additional equipment and additional fuel cost. And because we had already placed interim cover over the portion of that slope, because by regulatory, by the state of Michigan, we're required to make sure we cover the garbage with two feet of clay. We have to strip that clay off as we fill into it and then replace that interim cover on that outside slope. So those are the three pieces that I talk about on the second page. The primary compensation, the fuel adjustment, and interim cover. The fuel adjustment in there is because through no fault of our operators' own, this is just because it is the way it is, the fuel costs, as everyone is quite aware, have skyrocketed this year. So our contract with our operators do have a minimum where we compensate them for the cost of fuel above a certain point. That point is $3.40 per gallon. Diesel fuel last year, had they been able to fill the slope on a normal progression, had we been able to build it, you know, fuel was somewhere around $2.80 a gallon when I go back and I look at the records. So the difference between that $2.80 and the $3.40 has to be borne by the operator as well. And I thought it was fair that we would compensate them based on fuel usage in that additional piece of equipment at the rate we've documented that it burns it and came up with a $7,000 just fuel add there. So what I don't go into here is how I came, how the calculations were done. If you're interested in seeing where the, what those numbers look like to come up with the numbers that I have in this memo, I'm happy to share that with you. I didn't bring it with me this evening, but I can certainly bring that info to you if you're interested in seeing how we came up with the detail on those numbers. So the total compensation that I'm requesting for the last excavating, our landfill operators is $148,368.39 for this one-time fill in Cell 8.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody have any questions for Matt? In one time over a long period?
Yes.
Right? I mean, it's-
Actually, the fill is already begun. It's already approximately 50% complete just because we can't wait and it's got to get done anyway.
Yeah, all good. Thank you. We have a motion to support, Roger. Are there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Item number C, Resolution 2216, Eddie Development, Brownfield. Jeff Donelson is with us tonight, so if we could get a motion or a-
I'll make motion, send it to full board.
Support?
We have a motion and support. Does anybody understand it or would anybody like to have Jeff explain it?
Okay, seeing no, nothing?
One question. How long is this tax capture going to be?
Commissioner Van den Bosch, to answer your question, it's going to be six years. And in the sixth year, the tax capture will be declining. So the amount of taxes going to the local jurisdiction will be increasing over previous five years in the sixth year. This is a very short Brownfield plan.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Joe. Item number D, the landfill rolloff container. So there was two bids on that jet, on that. One was for $41,000. The other one was for $46,000. So I need a motion to send that to the full board.
I would make a motion to send that to the full board.
Support?
Any questions on the motion?
Matt already answered them for me.
All right.
Pretty cut and dry.
Yes, it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other environmental public work matters?
You had a lot of garbage tonight.
Just a quick question. How was the sound back there today? Is it better? It's a lot better up here, too. I can, I can really, I don't know what they did, but I can hear a lot better for some reason today, so. Yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to say thank you for your contribution. After Michigan, yes, everybody just speaking to the microphones at the last meeting, I think you're really, really, really welcome. I am ringing in my ears. So hearing me or something, you're providing, you mean, good. When you speak into the microphone, I just want to show you like greatly appreciate that. And if you can speak a little bit slower, I know that's hard to do because we all can be, but I do appreciate your input.
Thank you for that. Information only, the monthly Parks and Rec Commission financial documents.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, receive and file.
Make motion, receive and file packets.
Support.
Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Here.
Commissioner Bowman?
Item two, additions, deletions. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we're going to move to updates. Any updates? I'm not sure where to put this, so I guess I have one. At the MTA annual dinner, Riley Township will be hosting their quarterly meeting where they have their township business done and they got the officers showing up. That will be held at Bow River Golf Course on June 16th. The specifics on all the attendees, but I imagine Bill Dieter will be there and the other officers, Riley Township officials, but it'll be being held at Bow River Golf Course. And if you want more details, the officer's going to be calling Mark at the golf course and then I'll have more. Of course, that's going to be prior to our meeting here. So it'll be right around lunchtime if anybody's in a restaurant.
Oh, they do an afternoon meeting?
Yeah, they do a lunch meeting. They always have.
Okay.
When I was president for five years, we'd go to a different area four times a year. And sometimes Fort Grashit, Riley held it before. You'd provide lunch and then they'd take care of their necessary MTA business. And so it's a meeting, but then they'll have lunch afterwards. Any other updates? Any conceptual initiatives?
There's none.
All right, thank you. Any old business? None. New business? 7A, Public Health Officer Employment Agreement.
Make a motion to move to full board?
Support.
And I have to get this back up again because I got lots of questions. I see the contract is, it's got an amendment, not previous like what we did for Dr. Merkentant. We have an amendment to the contract and they're kind of tied in together. Under Section 2, I guess my first question, and was there any other, I don't know if you know this, Dave, or not, was there any other applicants other than somebody from our current health department?
Yeah, so for this position, there, there ended up being seven applicants for the position, five of which were qualified. And so we were interviewing all of the qualified candidates. One of those, one of those people did withdraw prior to the interview.
Okay. Were they all current employees or just this one?
This was the, Liz King was the only internal candidate.
Okay. Just I have concerns about having somebody who worked with Dr. Merkentant, just the, the observation of that or the perception of it could be questioned. So I'm questioning it myself, but we'll go forward with that. And the employment agreement under Section 2, and that's where it makes, "Public Health Officer Shall Perform Duties As Outlined in Attachment A Job Description of This Agreement." So now I have to go back and forth. I could not find, eh, or I'm sorry, in that issue, I got to go back down to where I highlighted it. Says supervision received. The health officer works under the general supervision of the county administrator, the advisory board of health, the county board of commissioners, in accordance with the Michigan Public Health Code, MCL, that's where you'll know, Gary, but from my understanding, this whole issue, she did not advise the public, the advisory of the board of health. She didn't talk to you guys at all. And you told me that she didn't tell you about the mask mandate. When she did that, she didn't look to any advisement from you guys at all. So I have a concern with that being in there. Is this current health director, whoever we put in that position, is she going to be required to report to the advisory health board?
Well, what this is saying is these are the sources from which the person can receive supervision. So obviously, it could be from the county administrator, it could be from this board of commissioners.
Okay.
So from the advisory board, but it's to be understood, the advisory board is just that.
Right.
Advice.
Okay.
They're not like this board that can give directives or the county administrator.
So as an advisory board, they're not really a supervisor. They can't direct the health director any duties.
I think supervise in the sense of giving advice or recommendations, but it's not binding.
But you know, legalist type talk, if somebody's got that in there and the advisory board did give supervision to the health director and she uses that as guidance, he or she, whoever gets positioned, uses that as guidance to make their decisions, she could say, well, the board of health is the one that advised me. So I have a little issue with that being in there. I can see where the county administrator, because she reports to the county commissioners, of course, you got the county board of commissioners in there also. So I think that they should be reporting back to our county administrator and the county commissioners. I just have issues with that.
Understand.
I don't know if that could be removed because I don't think, oh, there's a couple of other things in here also that I have questions on. I don't want to have an issue that we had in December and January and have this being used as a discussion point, and that's how decisions were made. So I don't think that the advisory board of health has any authority. I think that's directly on the board of commissioners and our county administrator. And I think that should be put in there stating exactly that, that the only ones-
What you're saying is you'd like the advisory board reference to that removed.
Back in the, it says here under three, compensation trends benefits. The employee shall be entitled to an annual salary of $107,090. And I see in the amendment, so for any future employees, and this will be a starting point, but it says the salary range will be $91,541 to $120,463 annual. If you go to $107,000, starting point, that's already above 50% rather than starting. She's never been a health director. Why is she getting at that starting point? I don't know if you have any knowledge of that, Dave?
I, I do not.
I have concern with the 107 because also in that contract says the first of every year, she's going to get a raise. He or she will get an automatic raise. So we hire her in June, come January, she's getting a raise. Or is this locked in at the 107,000 for the term of this contract?
No, I, there are annual raises that are given to the, the people that work for the county. But I would, this is something that, and I'm not dumping it on anybody, it's just something I wasn't involved with. So I would, assuming you're going to send this on to the board, you can ask Carrie how she landed on that number. I know there was a reason and she's thoughtful about that kind of stuff.
She is.
I just don't know what the reason was.
Yeah, she's very good with figures, so I just thought that was a high starting point because I think if we hired anybody else in any other position, and you can take canoe employees or employees where the starting point is, I could use the clerk for that, but your salary. But to have it starting at that point already without ever having that position, I think we shouldn't be doing that. I think it should be at the low end.
I'm guessing it reflects her years of experience in the department and a very high level of management, so that's my guess.
I, I also think we have it in the binder of what comparables are in other counties, and I don't have those figures in front of me.
Okay.
But I'm sure we're in that, that range so that we're, we're comparable to our, our light counties.
I'm sure that's where she got the $91,000 to the $120,000, though.
Mm-hmm.
To get the starting and the ending point for that position, I think that's where she would have got the comparables from.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's what she's done in the past, so. Just think it's the high end, so I'm concerned about the 107, starting there. I think that's about all the questions I have. Anybody else have any questions?
What was the question on the health board? I thought this was saying if there was going to be anything put into place, that they would have to be notified. And you don't want them notified if something comes up? You don't want them to be part of a notification, the health board?
Oh, definitely want them notified. But under here, under the wording, it said supervision. It's listing the health board as a supervisory board. And if the health board gave direct instructions, the wording of this contract, and I'm, you know, I've got my, Gary's much better at this than I am, but I go through a lot of contracts, especially with going, what's going on with the golf course and all the contracts there. You're familiar with that. You make sure that you don't get yourself in a bind. So I just have concern that if the health board, and that's as an advisory board, can actually give supervision to the health director, I don't think that should happen because they could do that in error and then the health director, for whether in purpose or intent, if there's no negligence or anything still, but if they make a poor decision, I just have an issue with that.
You, you sit on that board.
I do. So it, it's strictly advisory. It's, it's her relaying information to us. The, the board members are in areas of the community so that we feel like we're represented across the county and not just in one area. It's, it's an advisory role. We don't have anything to do with-
Contract says otherwise, though. The wording could be interpreted that.
So what you're saying is you don't feel that board supervises her?
No.
Okay.
No.
So I just want that removed. There's still, they're due diligence as an advisory board and certainly have communication with the health director and give all the tools back and forth so they get a lot of expertise, a lot of-
That's an easy fix.
Okay. So that's just my concern if it's in the contract?
Good.
Any other questions? Well, we have a motion as a second to forward this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, Commissioner McConnell, District 1, American Rescue Plan Project Broadband Study. I'll have a motion first, though.
I would make a motion.
For?
To the full board.
Okay. Fill us in, please.
This is just broadband study in Grant Township.
Okay.
So it, it's the beginning. They're going to get something in place. I, I think their, their hope is that if there's some money available out there to get some broadband put in, the first thing they're going to ask for is what do you currently have in your township available? So that's what this study will tell them. It's going to tell them who has hardwire and where it's at and what it's capable of. So if, if they want to do something else, this is going to, this is the determining factor of what they would need to have access to the majority of their township.
Other main roads, how would they potentially hardwire any of the backroads?
Just like Detroit Edison does.
Okay, because there's-
Barrier.
Very expensive. There's like 54 miles of roads in Grant Township. That'd be an awful lot, a large expense to try to hardwire every house.
Well, whether, maybe they won't hardwire, right? That's what this study will show. Maybe, maybe they can do something with small satellites in the areas.
If that can happen, I'd want it definitely for the townships I represent.
Well, when the 5G comes out, that, it's going to be lightning fast broadband. It's my, one of, well, my son has it at their house and it, it's incredible.
Yeah.
All right, any other?
There is a couple other township. I, I think Lynn Township is going to do something with it and so is Muzzy, trying to get a plan in place. You're not going to get any federal funds unless you have a plan in place.
Absolutely.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, manning table change request for the maintenance department.
I'd move this to be sent to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7D, manning table addition request, day treatment, night watch.
Make motion, this go to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. The library director employment agreement.
I'd make a motion to send to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7F, Resolution 22-18, 2022 Summer Tax Levy, L4029R, and this is for final action?
I would make the motion for final action.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
7G, Commissioner Beeden, District 3, American Rescue Plan Project, building renovations. Can I have a motion?
Make motion.
Support.
Send it to the full board.
If you would, give us a-
Sure. So the Blue Water Recovery Outreach Center provides services for people that are recovering from addiction, so whatever that might be. They have a building located at 10th and Lapeer that they are doing renovations for, to support an increase of services. So they're looking to build office spaces out, have rooms for private classes, meeting space, to really build a community and have space for, for people to come together and get support.
Which building is that, Lisa?
It's across from Advia on the, the west side. It's got an empty lot next to it where they do gardening and-
Oh, okay, yep.
There's a fire pit there.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of next door to the old Pizza Hut.
So it's north of Lapeer, a couple blocks, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a Pizza Hut and then them and then a, then the vacant lot, then them and then the party store.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, yes, and then there's a car sales between, between Lapeer and Water.
Yeah, okay. I, I got you.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if it was going in that old video store or something.
No. No, they're already established. Yeah.
Got you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to think, Lisa, that's a great program. I really, I was impressed they did a walkthrough with quite a few of us the other day. Chairman Bowman and I sat through it and Shane Hernandez spoke so highly of it and it crossed all party lines on that, what they're doing.
Yeah.
And Judge Damon just couldn't say enough great things about it. And I know he's a huge supporter of it. We get these people cleaned up on, at the jail and going through RSAT programs and stuff. And this is just another tool that they can use to stay clean.
Mm-hmm.
We, we get them clean, then here you go. Go back out to the real world and that's when they need the support and the life coaches that they have there. And like I said, I was really impressed. It was, it was a great visit and I'm not normally, this isn't in my wheelhouse, I had to say, but-
You're saying you're feeling soft right now? You don't like?
Don't go too far.
I do-
Still can vote no.
I do, I do like that their program isn't cookie cutter.
Absolutely.
So when you come out, if you have a, a passion for cooking, they give you the tools and, and connect you with people to get you started in that path. If it's car repair, you know, same thing. They, you get to establish your plan of recovery and they work with you. So I think that has a meaningful impact and the numbers that they shared with me of people that they've touched in the last few years that they've been in existence is staggering to me.
And their software they use and the recidivism that they actually have, that, those numbers are very good.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's because of the unique program that they run there. Mr. Patterson's very enthusiastic, to say the least. I mean, it was, and then the, the staff we met there, you could tell they were all recovering addicts themselves. So they know what these people are going through and, like I said, I was moved and that doesn't happen. I want to spend more money on the cops, so, but I think this is a great program.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Van den Bosch was moved.
Don't push it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. This time moving number eight. At this time, is there any other Ways and Means Matters? Seeing none, information only, can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.